I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 2nd, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is a presentation of the 8th Annual Water Awareness School Poster Contest winners and water conservation specialist Myra Ritchie will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Department Heads, and fellow city residents. It is an honor to be up here to acknowledge students who participated in the 8th Annual Water Conservation Water Awareness Poster Contest. Being the 8th year, every year it gets competitive, and in 2010, when we first implemented the Conservation Awareness Poster Contest, there was only 42 posters that were submitted. Again, the numbers have been increasing since then, so this year, we had over 128 posters that were submitted among 7 elementary schools. All 3rd grade students from the Santa Maria Bonita School District were invited to compete in this competition. We had mentioned to all the teachers what we were looking for were posters that symbolize water awareness, water conservation, and why water is so important to the community. This evening, I'd like to acknowledge these student winners who are all present here this evening. First, I'd like to present Honorable Mentioned Recipient Adolfo Ramos. Adolfo Ramos is from Jimenez Elementary School and is in Mrs. Garcia's class. As one of the prizes, he is able to receive 4 free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, 4-hour voucher, unlimited playtime at Boomer's. Congratulations, Adolfo.
Hello, my name is Adolfo. I was inspired to make my water conservation poster because without water, there would be no plants, there would be not be animals or humans. So I made this poster in English and Spanish because lots of people in the United States speak Spanish. I wish to thank my friends, classmates, and my family. Thank you.
For 3rd place winner, I'd like to call upon Alejandra Aguilar.
As 3rd place winner, Alejandra is able to receive 4 free tickets to the Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum, 6 free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center, and 1 4-hour voucher, unlimited playtime at Boomer's.
Hi, my name is Alejandra. I am from Abbot School. My inspiration for this poster was animals. They need their home to be clean. We can help by saving water and throwing away our trash away. Thank you for picking my water poster.
For 2nd place winner, I'd like to call upon Admironi Garcia, who is from Jimenez Elementary School, also Mrs. Garcia's class.
Hello, my name is Admironi. I decided to make my poster because I want to help people understand to not waste water. I want to teach people that water is very important, and it helps us in many ways. I wish to thank Mrs. Garcia because she gave us ideas on how to write, make our poster.
And last but not least, I'd like to call upon 1st place winner Vanessa Cortez of Jimenez Elementary School. Vanessa was able to receive 4 free passes to Six Flags Magic Mountain, 2 premier movie tickets to Edwards Cinema, and 10 free swim passes to Paul Nelson Aquatic Center.
Hello, my name is Vanessa. I was inspired to make my water conservation poster because I want everyone to learn how to save water. I wish to thank my classmates, friends, and my family. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present to you this year 2017 Water Awareness Poster Contest winners. These students have worked hard in order to place this year, and so we always like to acknowledge them, not only with trophies, awards, but we also like to acknowledge them as far as making a poster that will be up over at City Hall throughout the whole month of May, Observing Water Awareness Month. And also, I'd like to thank the teachers, Mrs. Julian Garcia of Jimenez Elementary School. Mrs. Garcia, if you'd like to, please stand up. Thank you again for your participation and for your students' efforts in participating this year. A special thanks to the following businesses and agencies who have helped support our Water Awareness Poster Contest since 2010: Santa Maria Bonita School District, City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department, Edkar Carey of Emerald Wave Media, Rich Watson of American General Media, Santa Maria Valley Discovery Museum, Boomer's of Santa Maria, and Richard Cole of Graphics LTD. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ritchie. Someone left their sunglasses on the table in the back, so if you're looking for a pair of sunglasses, they're now at the media table. Logan is protecting them right there, so you can ask Logan for them. Thank you. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Boyson will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and as a tag to the Water Awareness Month, or Water Awareness Poster Awards, this is a proclamation. Throughout the month of May, water purveyors throughout California work to increase public understanding of the importance of water conservation and promote awareness about the management of the precious resource. Whereas the Utilities Department, along with other local governments and water agencies, encourages water conservation and the responsible stewardship of water. And whereas every industry, business, and resident can make a difference throughout the use of low-flow devices and drought-tolerant landscaping. And whereas during the 8th Annual Water Conservation Poster Contest, 3rd grade students in the Santa Maria Bonita School District created colorful posters symbolizing Water Awareness Month. And whereas, along with these young students, the City of Santa Maria is committed to clean, safe, and sustainable water resources for this community. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of May 2017 as Water Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and urge residents and business to increase their water awareness and make water conservation a continuing way of life. And here to accept this is none other than Myra Ritchie.
Again, second time around, what can I say? It's an honor to always come up here and be able to receive the proclamation on behalf of the Utilities Department. I being the water conservation specialist for the City of Santa Maria for 15 years, not a day passes that I'm blessed to have the position and to be able to work with people from different walks of life. Working for the department, like I said, I learn something new every day. I'm able to work indoors and outdoors. Part of my job working outdoors, I'm able to provide customer service to city residents by doing home water visits. I also do class presentations throughout the elementary schools, and I also do public education to most of the property managers of hotels, motels, homeowners associations, and mobile home parks. Again, we definitely have a good widespread of water conservation media outreach. We have information on our city website that we promote as far as tips and ideas indoors and outdoors, and what type of low-flow fixtures you are able to participate, along with other Department of Water Resources rebates that are available. We do have newspapers ads. Sometimes we do promote those, English and both in Spanish. We have press releases to inform all the city residents what workshops and public events are actually able, are implemented throughout the whole year. We also have poster boards over at City Hall, and most of all, we have public service announcements on local television stations. It was also a privilege and honor to work with Madam Mayor as of last month to promote National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. We did place, but we didn't place the 1st or 2nd. Ventura did, but we'll get them next time, Madam Mayor. And for our upcoming workshops to promote water conservation, water awareness, we do have a Water Wise Landscape Workshop coming up in June, and this is also free to the city residents, so please come and check that out. And also, we are collaborating with Department of Water Resources, a workshop coming in the fall, Climate Change Workshop. So presenting this information to you, I hope you do take time and look onto the city website. We have many things to inform the community, again, both English and Spanish. We provide different swag as far as water conservation kits, toilet tank banks, spray nozzles. Again, I thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Department Heads, and city residents, thank you upon receiving this proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas National Day of Prayer is an annual event established by the Act of Congress which encourages Americans to pray for our nation, its people, and its leaders. And whereas many observances are held across our country which concentrates on the need to pray for those in leadership at all levels of national, church, and educational areas of influence. And whereas Days of Prayer have been called for since 1775 when the Continental Congress designated a time for prayer in forming a new nation. And whereas in 1863, Abraham Lincoln called for such a day. And whereas officially, Day of Prayer was established as an annual event by an Act of Congress in 1952 and was signed into law by President Truman. And whereas, the law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Ronald Reagan, establishing the Day of Prayer as the 1st Thursday of May each year. And whereas, Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans, and every American may observe the day in his or her own way. And whereas Protestants, Roman Catholic, and Jewish leaders are included in Day of Prayer events celebrated in Washington DC and throughout the nation. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognized that the 4th day of May 2017 as Day of Prayer in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all people of all faiths to participate in Day of Prayer according to their own traditions. Now before I call Ms. Staples to come up to receive her certificate, I would like to let everybody know that our upcoming Day of Prayer is going to be this Thursday at the Santa Maria Fair Park from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And you know, people, we're, the times that we are in in this country, I think, and I hope, that that entire Santa Maria Fair Park is just flooded with people because this would be a good time to come in and pray for our nation. So Ms. Staples.
Madam Mayor. Etta, may I share these with you, please, for the constipations? Thank you, Julian. We'd just like to thank you, Mayor Patino, for your faithfulness in supporting prayer in this community and appreciating and supporting the National Day of Prayer. We have an anniversary this year. It's 20 years.
How?
We have been celebrating prayer, the need for it, the belief in it, and the outreach to invite and include all Judeo-Christian faiths to come together to pray for our city, for our community, and for our nation. So this year, our theme is, out of Daniel, the 19th verse, "For yours great name's sake, O Lord, hear us, forgive us, and act for your sake, O my God." So I have brought some of our board with us tonight to introduce you, and, to you, and I just want to remind you that all of our materials are in English and in Spanish. Our outreach has been large and growing all the time. Isn't that great? We want to thank the city and Santa Maria Community Television. They have been faithful also to tape those programs year after year and have them on television. We also have La Nueva Radio Vision 88.9 FM Live, Spanish radio is going to go out this time. Isn't that wonderful addition? And a lot of other great things for our good folks. I'd like to give a personal thanks to Councilwoman Jack Boyson. Today on the Ben Hays Show, he brought up the topic, National Day of Prayer, is this Thursday. So many thanks to you, Councilwoman Boyson. So let me introduce some of our wonderful board members, if I may. Cecile Prevost, Olga Caldwell, Pastor Dave Brogan, our Master of Ceremonies, isn't he wonderful? And Julie Colgrove. Julie, how many years you been with us now?
I think 17.
We think 17 years. Isn't that neat that God has made such an impact on our hearts that he would be faithful to bring people back of all faiths and of all denominations? Hamburger lunch all, 11 o'clock, free. Free. And so, just wanted to say thank you. There are 48,000 events that have happened across this nation to pray for its leadership, to pray nationally and locally last year. Forty-eight thousand events, and we're a part of that. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council for your support, and all of the city. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Staples, and thank the entire board. The next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Whereas the benevolent and protective order of the Elks has designated the week of May 1 through 7, 2017, as Elk National Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their services to the community, state, and nation. And whereas, Santa Maria Elks #1538 will sponsor an observance during the week in tribute to the junior citizens of the local community. And whereas, no event could be more deserving of community support and participation than one dedicated to the young people who represent the city's greatest resource and who, in the years ahead, will assume the responsibility for the advancement of its society. And whereas, youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement of adults to help develop those qualities and the character essential for future leadership. And whereas, to achieve this worthy objective, the people of local communities should demonstrate their partnership, their understanding, their hopes, and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 1 through May 7, 2017, is Youth Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage residents and businesses to participate wholeheartedly in the observance. In witness where to, Alice Patino has caused the city, a seal of the City of Santa Maria, and affixed her signature to this proclamation. And here to accept this is Santa Maria's exalted ruler, Tony Dark.
Mike, before you go down, would you let the people know that we're all Elks now? I was the last one.
Yes. Etta was the holdout. She was brought into the Elks 1538 by Mike Arnt, who's sitting in the audience, about a month ago, right, Etta?
That's right.
Jack has been on for a number of years. I think Dr. Moats has been on for a number of years. I've been on and serving currently as the Secretary at the Elks. And I don't know how many years Alice has been affiliated with her husband, John.
Thank you, Mike.
Madam Mayor, City Council Pearson, on behalf of the 3100 members that our lodge has, we proudly say we're the 3rd largest lodge in all of Elkhorn. We gladly accept this. One of the things we hold prideful are our youth, they are our current, will become our current leaders, and our veterans. And we thank you for this proclamation. Our whole rodeo that we have coming, a big day is devoted to our children. I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know if people realize how much the Elks have done over the years. The Elks Field that was bought and paid for by the Elks, and all the activities the kids have done over the years in all kinds of athletics, the Elks has put the bill for that, and that's been probably since before I was a kid, but they've been doing that in this community for so many years. And a lot of times, people don't know what they've been doing, but it's there. And I know when I read the Elk, whatever that magazine that comes to the Elkhorn, the magazine that comes out during the month, you know, other Elk organizations too do a lot in their communities, but this one is so far above and so superior to the others. But thank you so much. The next, have another proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
And this proclamation is for Compost Awareness Week. Whereas the composting councils of Canada, Ireland, and Australia, United Kingdom, and the United States have declared the 1st week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. Whereas the City of Santa Maria Wastewater Treatment Plant was an early pioneer in helping to establish a regional compost facility at Ingle and Gray, where the city's bio-solids have been composted since 1993, transforming the compost into a product that makes a healthy soil and a proven method of conserving water. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Solid Waste Division developed the successful green waste collection program, diverting green waste from the landfill, conserving valuable landfill space, and utilizing these valuable organics to make healthy soil through composting. And whereas this year's theme, compost, healthy soil, healthy food, was selected to highlight the importance of compost in conserving water and healthy soil. And whereas the City of Santa Maria and Ingle and Gray have created a partnership to serve the recycling goals of the Central Coast. And Ingle and Gray have successfully taken organic feedstock and composted the material for sustainable landscaping, horticulture, and agricultural practices. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 7 through 13, 2017, as Compost Awareness Week in the City of Santa Maria, in appreciation of the efforts of composting councils, extension agents, homeowners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers everywhere. And here to accept this is Carl Engel.
Madam Mayor and City Council, we want to thank you for this proclamation, and as usual, with our compost, we grow all the council members a little special flower each year, and I'll leave these on the table there. And also, I'd like to bring your attention to a combined effort of the City of Santa Maria, Utilities Department, Ingle and Gray, the Recreation and Parks Department, and Plantel. We're having a special workshop this Saturday at Muscle Center from 9 till noon. It's open to the public. You can come and bring your bucket and get a bucket of compost free, and while the plants last, you can get a free plant donated by Plantel. And our guest speaker there is going to be Billy Goodnick. He is a renowned landscape designer and architect, and he will be doing the speaking. So all of you people, if you want to spend a nice Saturday morning learning about the qualities of compost, and that'd be a good place to do it. And I thank you again. And it goes to show you that if you use compost like Councilwoman Moats, you too can win a Santa Maria beautiful award for your garden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. The next item is the proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
This proclamation will be in regards to the National Police Week. Whereas all of the promises America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free from crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger preserving our freedom and security. Whereas during the week of May 14 through May 20, 2017, National Police Week is observed in order to recognize hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment of our national peace officers. And whereas, in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria is observing May 17, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, 10 California peace officers were recognized as being killed in the line of duty during 2016. And whereas, these special observances provide all Santa Marians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 14 through May 20 as National Police Week, and proclaim Wednesday, May 17, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express our appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to making Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. And before I give this proclamation to Officer Ron Murillo, I would like to extend gratitude to our Chief, Chief Ralph Martin, and to the entire Police Department of the men and women of the City of Santa Maria, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, Department Heads. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to invite you, May 17- Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to invite you, May seventeenth, to the Santa Maria Police Department for our Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony. Uh, we're gonna be honoring ten members that lost their lives last year. And it's a great ceremony. If you haven't seen it, it is a sight to see. We have the Plane of Taps, we have a riderless horse, and our Twenty-One Gun Salute. So everybody's invited. And then, right after the ceremony, we also have in a fundraiser barbecue. God forbid if we ever lose an officer, we will have a fund set up for that family. So, I'd just like to invite everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Murillo.[634.04][634.04](applause)
Mayor, I, I'd like to add that I've been to many of these, and the one here that's been put on here in Santa Maria for many, many years is as fine as anyone in the state of California that I've attended.
Uh, one year I was back in DC, um, uh, with staff from here lobbying, and the, and the police memorial was going on, and there were even Mounties. There were policemen from all over the world there at the, the memorial in DC. It was really something to see. And in the hotel we were staying was just all full of policemen now, and all up and down the street were parked all these motors. It, it was, I mean, they just came into the city and took over, and so it was really, you felt, you felt real safe, real safe. I will be doing the next proclamation. Whereas the time is fast approaching for the seventy-fourth Annual Elks Rodeo and Parade, June first through June fourth, twenty seventeen, in the city of Santa Maria, considered by many to be the event of the year. And whereas the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Queen Kickoff and Auction took place on Friday, April twenty-first, at the Santa Maria Elks Lodge Fifteen Thirty-Eight unveiling candidates sponsored by local nonprofit youth organizations while raising funds with a live auction, raffle, and live entertainment. And whereas continuing the tradition of Clarence Manetti and Leland Butch Semus, hundreds of loyal Elks, Elks Lodge Fifteen Thirty-Eight members have volunteered and been drafted to help make this rodeo a tremendous success. And whereas this year's rodeo will be featured on the national platforms of CBS Sports and WranglerNetwork.com. And whereas Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Parade will begin at nine o'clock on Saturday, June third, and continue down Broadway from Melv to Enos Streets, dedicated to the breast cancer awareness, Tough Enough to Wear Pink program. And whereas it has been a longstanding tradition to begin wearing rodeo clothes several weeks prior to the Elks Rodeo, that's why we're all dressed this way. Congratulations, Mr. Boyson, you made it. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, do proclaim May first through June fourth, twenty seventeen, as Go Rodeo Days in the city of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to enter the rodeo spirit by wearing western apparel. In witness thereof, I'm here to have set my hand, have caused a seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed this second day of May, twenty seventeen. And the reason I give Mr. Boyson a bad time, because the first time he was on the council, he was the only one not dressed in the proper apparel.[802.12][802.12](laughing)
Now, in all fairness, Madam Mayor, I, I really had suspicion that it was a hazing type thing, that I was gonna be the only one who showed up.[811.32][811.32](laughing)
You showed them, huh?[814.12][814.12](laughing) So anyway, and Mr. Phil Harwick from the Elks will receive this proclamation.[820.12][820.12](applause)
I left my outfit to Jack, what can I say?[828.12][828.12](laughing)
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, I think you all know Bob. He's working with us now that, that he's retired from the council. Got Jose Ariano here, uh, he is our, our secretary. A good-looking young, single fellow there is Scott Parsons.[864.01][864.01](laughing) And mostly the officers you met here from the Elks are, are also on, on our board. So I just have a, a quick little speech. Uh, when this board took over the rodeo about six years ago, we, we set some goals for ourselves, and one of them, of course, was to put on the best rodeo humanly possible, and also to bring as much business to the city of Santa Maria as we could, and as much notoriety to the city of Santa Maria as we could. And the truth is, we've done pretty well at those things. Um, each year during the rodeo, there's several businesses here in Santa Maria that set new sales records. But, uh, rodeo that's coming, it's something completely different. Uh, it was something we were never able to anticipate when we started this thing. There's about six hundred thirty-two rodeos in America, and out of all the six hundred and thirty-two rodeos, nine of them have the Challenge of Champions. That's a group of, of, uh, current and past world champions, and the sixteen top rodeo performers in America today, broken up into teams, which includes a Santa Maria team, and they'll be here at our rodeo, uh, to, to perform. Uh, we're one of nine rodeos, we're the third rodeo in their, in their circuit. Um, when they get the ninth rodeo, somebody wins a great deal of money. So, along with a whole bunch of world's champions that'll show up in Santa Maria on Thursday, will also be CBS Wide World of Sports International. We'll be on international television for the first time ever. The last time we're on, in, on CBS Wide World of Spur, Sports was a couple of decades ago. So, my brother, who lives in New Zealand, is gonna be able to watch the Santa Maria Elks rodeo, and I think that's pretty cool. And, coming up, also is, is, uh, Wrangler, will be streamed live on the Wrangler, uh, Sports Network. So we're gonna be on two national platforms for the first time ever. That's pretty cool. Um, the rodeo itself will be pretty spectacular. We have, uh, we have the top announcers in the business, we have the funniest barrel man I think any of us have ever seen. Um, we have some specialty acts, we, we change up our specialty acts every year. We put on a great rodeo, um, but we put on, we change up the specialty act so nobody gets bored with it and wants to keep coming back. And of course, we'll have the, the flying motorcycles at the end of the rodeo. They're so popular, we would never want to change that. Um, it's hard to picture how this is, what effect this is gonna have on Santa Maria. But I think, I think we'll fill hotels and restaurants, which has always been our goal. Um, I hate to use the word, it's putting us on the map, because we've always been on the map, but it's certainly bringing us a great deal of international notoriety we've never had before. None of us, when we started this, could have foreseen where we'd be in, in just five years. Um, but there's, there's a, a simple truth at work here, and that is that without the help and the encouragement and the cooperation of the mayor's office and the city council, we could never have come as far as we have in such a short period of time. I, I think we've become pretty good partners. And so from the bottom of my heart, for, for Elks Club and Elks Recreation, I want to thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1093.76][1093.76](applause)
Sorry, as you know, we are kicking off this year, we're bringing back Go Rodeo, and we're asking all the businesses along Main and Broadway and anyplace else that wants to decorate like we used to six years ago, the bales of hay, the, the clothes, the window paintings, the banners, and those kinds of things. So we're passing out, and you can call the Elks, because they've got flyers. The, the Elks will do barbecues for three groups of winners of the competition to decorate your business. So please, please, get in touch with Elks Rec, give them a phone call, they'll give you all the information. You can go on the Chamber of Commerce, uh, website, and it is on there right now, so let's push to make this place look nice.
Bob, what day is the, is the voting day?
The voting day starts on, I believe, the twenty-fourth. I don't have a flyer with me, I'm sorry, Etta.
Okay.
Somewhere, but get your application in now. The city has leniently allowed us to do the window painting and those kinds of things that may not have in the past been that good. But anyway, and we've got high school kids that are standing by to paint your windows, so please contact the Elks, and they'll line that up for you. Thanks.
And Scott, would you like to, um, see if anyone wants to come out and work on the Saturdays?
Yes, Mayor.
You can pull, you can pull it up, you don't have to lean down now.[1178.23][1178.23](laughing)
Every Saturday from now till rodeo, we are doing all kinds of work out at the, out at the rodeo grounds. It could be painting, could be weeding, could be planting. We have numerous, numerous tasks to get done before our event coming here in about four weeks. So I invite all of you. We will provide the lunch, we will provide the tools, we'll provide the materials, we would gladly accept any, any help you might have. Bring your family, your friends, relatives. Come on out, we're there eight o'clock every, every Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for you, what you guys do.[1217.01][1217.01](applause) Moving on, the next item on our agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
Yes, this time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to, to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the city council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the, um, public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them. And Madam Mayor, I do not have any requests to speak.
Oh, you don't have any? Okay. I guess I could have saved you the time of reading that part of the agenda. Okay. Before we go on, Mr. Hayden, would you like to make any comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Thank you. Before we move on, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? No? No? Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
I'm sorry. Who's gonna first? Who's?
Mr. Boyson. Okay, I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Having heard the motion and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Our next item this evening is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will hold a public hearing pursuant to California Elections Code Section One Zero Zero One Zero for public input regarding the proposed, uh, final map with boundaries of the voting districts and the sequence of elections for future, uh, council
Translator, where's Araceli? Is she here? Oh, there's Araceli, okay. Is here this evening to translate the Spanish comments for the city council and the demographer. Um, and if you see Ms. Lupion, to assist with your translation during the public hearings. So if there's anyone that needs the translation. A staff report is to be made by city attorney, Mr. Trejo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening is the fourth public hearing concerning the city's transition to district-based elections, and the second public hearing where maps have been available for the public and council's review. Public hearings were held on March seventh, March thirtieth, and April twentieth in compliance with AB three fifty. On April twentieth, at a special city council meeting, the city council decided to adopt four districts, and it considered the following criteria. Each district contains, shall contain an equal population, that each district comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, that each district contain a portion of the downtown specific plan, that communities of interest and the historic division of the city at Main and Broadway be considered, that head-to-head contests between incumbent council members be avoided to the extent possible. Based on this criteria, the city council selected three maps out of fourteen reviewed for further consideration this evening, and also to discuss the sequencing of elections. Staff believes that the three maps presented this evening meet all legal requirements, and all of them include at least a portion of the downtown specific plan. The purpose of this meeting tonight is for the city council to adopt one final map. Staff recommends this evening that the city council open the public hearing, invite members of the public to speak, and, um, and then bring the matter back to the city council for discussion and a selection of the final map. To assist the city this evening, Doug Johnson of NDC is here. He's also provided a memorandum concerning the possible sequence of elections, which is attachment D to your staff report. And if there are no questions, I'd turn, like to turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Any questions of Mr. Trejo? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you again. Uh, I will be fairly brief, but I do want to walk through the maps and a little bit of the election sequencing discussion. As the city attorney just mentioned, the, the council did, uh, list three kind of preferred maps at a last meeting based on the criteria that he described. The first is Map H, um, which, as you mentioned, all four districts have significant portions of the downtown specific plan. Uh, one thing that I do want to reiterate is that there's been a lot of discussions at the process about the four quadrants, but as we discussed at considerable length last time, the four quadrants are not equally populated, and so under the US Supreme Court's, uh, rulings, we do have to have an equal number of people. So in each case, we are looking roughly at four quadrant, uh, districts, but we have to make some adjustments to balance them. There's also been demographic spreadsheets put out for each of the maps, in addition to the maps themselves throughout this process and on the city website, with, uh, data related to the Voting Rights Act and other data, and hopefully people have had a chance to look at everything from the percentage of each district that is immigrants, to how many households speak Spanish at home, to how many households have children under the age of eighteen in the house. So we are looking at a big, broad range of, of, uh, of demographics and factors as we're looking at these maps. I put some, a selection of, of data from those demographics on the slides just for reference. But the things to think about is, if people look at the different maps, are, for example, um, among the, the Spanish in the, I'm sorry, the children under eighteen, you can see in the middle, gives you a sense of whether the, the districts tend to be older or younger. Um, for example, in Map H, you can see District Three, fifty-four percent of the households have a child under eighteen, so over half the households have a child under eighteen in, in District Three, um, compared to, for example, uh, Two and Four there, where about a third of the households have children under eighteen in the house. Similarly, it's come up at the forums about renters, and you can see the percentage of households that are occupied by renters versus owners in each district in Map H. You're getting one district, District Three, that's heavily renters, it's seventy percent, and it's just below half in Two and Four, and about forty percent in One. So these are different choices that, uh, people are looking at, and there's a question of, do you want a group concentrated in one seat? So they, and for example, in, in this map, Map Three, renters would have a very strong voice. Or do you want a significant number of renters or, or parents or whatever group in each district, so that each of the council members is really feeling like the answer to that issue? And of course, we've got the map next to it. Uh, we can see one in the northwest, two in the northeast, uh, four kind of is the east and west below Main, and then three is the west side of Broadway, and then coming across, um, below Main to, to pick up the neighborhood over to the east. Map J, similarly, again, in this case, all four districts actually meet at Broadway and Main, and all four districts obviously have a significant portion of downtown. And you're getting, um, similar demographics. Again, Map Three is, uh, more of a concentration of families with children at home. And this one, Map, uh, District Three, you're getting seventy-six percent of District Three is renters, and, uh, below half, and about a, of Two and Four, and about a third of, of District One. And Map N, the, the last of the maps I'll go through, um, and I should mention, I'm happy to zoom in on details if anyone has questions about the details of where these maps are or anything like that. Um, we're getting, again, all four districts meet at Broadway and Main, each of the four districts have a significant portion of the downtown, um, specific plan area, um, getting a little less concentration in this map. So, uh, you get essentially fifty-three percent, forty-seven percent, One, Two, and Three are fairly similar in their numbers of children at home, for example. And the renters also are more evenly spread out. So there's no district where renters are less than forty percent. Um, so each, um, district has a, a more even spread of, of the renters. Those are, obviously, I'm just pulling, pulling those two. One thing, if you want to, multifamily versus single family, multifamily percentage means people in apartment buildings. So it's not multifamilies in one house, it's multiple families in a building, so in that case apartments. Um, you may remember the statistics summary table, this is just pulled from that, the same one we looked at last time. Uh, look- we looked at last time, looking at the number of districts. This is what the council walked through at the last meeting to identify the three maps to continue with based on its criteria. Happy to come back to this if there are any questions about it, or if people want to deal with it. The, the big new piece of this is the election sequencing. It was a little overwhelming when we had 16 maps or 15 maps before us last time. It can still be a little overwhelming even with three maps, but what this boils down to is, you have four districts, two have to be up in 2018, two have to be up in 2020. There are a couple of principles that, that guide this. One is, one of the goals of the California Voting Rights Act is obviously to empower groups that previously feel they haven't been able to elect their preferred candidates at large. Those by definition tend to be low turnout groups, and you strengthen a low turnout group by putting its, that district's election up on the presidential cycle. So if you have an area where turnout drops a lot, or varies a lot from presidential to gubernatorial elections, and you're trying to empower the relatively low turnout group, the recommendation is to put that on the presidential cycle. The other factor at play here is that we want, what we refer to at NDC as respecting the voters. We want the voters, whenever possible, to make the decision about whether a council member gets reelected to another term or not. Sometimes, as in the case in all three of these maps, the other criteria, equal population, the Voting Rights Act, and neighborhoods, make that impossible for everyone, and all these maps have at least one pair. But to the degree possible within the other criteria, it is recommended to avoid that so that the voters are deciding whether a council member gets reelected, not me with my pen, telling the voters, "Sorry, I can only have one of these two." So those are the two factors. We have staff recommendations, obviously, these can be changed. The only true requirement is that there have to be two seats up in 2018 and two seats up in 2020, with the at-large mayor that keeps five members on the dice. So happy to go through these in more detail if you wish. Focusing on 2018 and Map H, our recommendation is that Districts 3 and 4 be up in 2018, with Map J, 2 and 4, and with Map N, 3 and 4. And again, that would put the low turnout districts up in the presidential cycle, and avoid, minimize, not avoid completely, but minimize the place where my pen dictates the voters. So that's my brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, or go into any details that you'd like.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, I do. And members of the council, city staff received three communications regarding the proposed district election boundary maps. A letter was received from the county elections office requesting priority be given to Map J1, as it would have the least impact on voters, followed by Map N1. Map H1 would have the most impacts on, on the voters, with polling place relocations and the potential for areas where it would be mandatory for voters to, to vote by mail and not have a polling location. Catherine Dudley wrote in support of Map J1, stating it follows the existing neighborhoods, whereas Maps H1 and N1 are attempting to gerrymander the city. I also was handed correspondence this evening for James Miller, Part-Time Faculty Association of Allen Hancock College, who could not attend the meeting this evening, but expressed support for Map N1, and indicated that Maps J1 and H1 appeared to be gerrymandered to suit politicians.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There was an additional letter received yesterday from Maldef.
Oh, okay.
A letter was received yesterday, sent to the city council and the city attorney's office from Maldef. They were objecting to Map H1, or opposing Map H1, and also suggesting that the city council sequence elections and do that with the, the first 2008 election with a majority Latino district. Oh, 2018. Thank you.
2018? Okay, now requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have 16 requests to speak.
Margarita de Olimpio, followed by Raymond Segura, followed by Kathy Sherram.
Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Margarita Olimpio, and I'm a retired professional who resides in the Carriage District. And let us focus on representing Santa Maria's real neighborhoods. Map J1 reflects the best. Council members and mayor, and Madam Mayor, it is in the best interest for Santa Maria to select J1 map. As a retired county and federal employee and educator who shops and uses services locally, I urge you to vote Map J. Take the right action and choose Map J. Choosing H1 or N1 continues the status quo and will demonstrate to the community that all this public input was just for show. Map J will invigorate Santa Maria. Map J is the right choice. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Raymond Segura, followed by Kathy Sherram, followed by Viviana Sebedra.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman.
Good evening.
A couple of council meetings ago, I spoke to the issue of considering natural boundaries for the mapping and redistricting as using Broadway and Main Street, and, and that was to ultimately also accept the maps submitted by CAUZ and even by Mr. Hector Torres. I also commented then that that would be an opportunity for the city council and the people from the Santa Maria community to work together for the benefit of Santa Maria. It appears Map 3 J1 is the closest to the initial mapping that was presented by CAUZ and Mr. Torres. To vote for any other map besides the above-mentioned would be, I would say, would be an affront to the Voters' Rights Act. To follow the example of our current federal administration, self-dealing behavior is not the best way to go about doing business here in Santa Maria. This is not a good example. It only shows that, that the councils supporting each other for seats on the council are more about self-dealing than supporting the community of Santa Maria, and showing loyalty to the community of Santa Maria. My grandmother used to advise me, you know, she, whenever I had a life decision to make, I would go talk to her and she would advise me, and one of the things she always, not always, but from time to time, would tell me, said, "Mijo, pon atención a lo que piensas hacer." Roughly translated, would be, pay attention to, seriously pay attention to what you're about to do. But the translation is lost, really, because she said this from her own cultural background of having it, having said it through the balance of mind and soul. You know, I'm sure that some of you who are sitting on the council run right now understand what my grandmother was saying also, but it's not just words that, that are, are being heard here. Again, it's that balance and, and soul that she was talking about. So I ask you to do the right thing and vote for Map J1. This is not about your seats, and it's not about anything else but doing the right thing.
Kathy, I'm sorry. Kathy Sherram voted by Viviana Sebedra, followed by Connie Ford, followed by Rebecca Bordenz.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I request that we refrain from clapping, because we're trying to take the names down?
Okay.
And we can't hear anybody as they come up, as you're calling out the names.
If you could refrain from clapping so that they can get the names down that I am announcing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to speak in support of Map J. While not perfect, it at least keeps most communities intact and at least allows for more fair representation, which is really the, the point of this important exercise. No one that, that I have known, that I know of at these meetings has spoken and requested that there be continuity of government, but the communities have spoken that they want representation by their, by someone from their neighborhood, and that includes me, and I, I don't wish to see my neighborhood split apart, and of the three, Map J does all of those things the best. Please listen to the citizens of the city and, and vote for Map J. Thank you.
Viviana Sebedra, followed by Connie Ford, followed by Rebecca Bordenz, followed by Hazel Davalos.
Good evening to the audience as well. I wanted to just share with you, one of my guilty pleasures has always been to watch House Hunters International when I have time. So as these people are around the world trying to decide which home is the best one for them in Germany, or South Africa, or New Zealand, they always have three options. They get rid of the one that totally doesn't suit them, and totally is not something that we should even be considering. It just speaks volumes to protecting council members' seats, and it has to be done away with. Now, of the remaining two, H has real issues. Who would suggest that the people who live near Stoll have anything or are a community of interest with the people who live in the country club area? Nothing. So you'll look at that also, another attempt to make sure that you protect seats. That's not the purpose of this whole process. The only one that even begins to consider public input when it came to map drawing and suggestions and public comment, J. That is the one you should be considering, J1. It protects communities of interest and follows those natural boundaries that were suggested from day one when we started this process. And I'm really disturbed that your consultant is also on board with gerrymandering. Santa Maria times, the voters have put in the current council, if we put four council members in one district, we are telling the voters, "You elected these four, but we're going to knock three of them out with a pen." That is why this is an issue. No, it's not an issue. They have to run, just like anybody else, if not against each other, against somebody else. If they chose to live in those districts and be concentrated on districts which are outside the city kind of main population, wonderful. Thank you for living in those areas and providing support to those people. What we need are neighborhood representatives, and that's why J is the best option. And so, once again, this is not an issue of making sure you keep your seats. It is an issue of making sure all of our neighborhoods are represented and not just a few of them.
Connie Ford, followed by Rebecca Bordenz, followed by Hazel Davalos, followed by Judith Birch.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about this. To me, the best choice of these three maps is, is J. I hear most of the other people in the audience feel the same way, because I feel that it is the least complicated and meets the criteria primarily of what the whole thing is about. We know that the district is happening here because, partly because we need to break down the, the problems that we have into more manageable parts. That's just a rule of thumb for any problem that anybody has, and that's the ideal thing that should happen here. And the parts that are going to be used, hopefully, will be uncomplicated and not have criteria that aren't going to help us analyze what it is. And by that, I mean, if you take, put one foot in boiling water and one in cold water, and you take an average, you come up with a normal temperature, but that doesn't give you the result you're looking for. You have to be able to use the best criteria you can and not confuse the issue, for instance, income, high income with low income. If you average that out, it looks pretty good. Some of the people in the town have lights and street protection, they have good roads, others don't. Are they going to be in the same district? Is it going to look good for that district, when in fact it's not? So I think we have to break it down in ways that reflects the true situation. I know, and I would say legacies will be formed here for the city council. In 30 years, you probably will not be on the city council, but you will probably still be residents here. And, you know, to look beyond today, what do you want the city to be? And I hope you trust the community, that the city you live in in 30 years will be what you want it to be. And looking at a map today, that might be, say, H, people will go, "Well, why did someone pick that?" Someone may say, "It's because that's where the city council lived at the time." So we want the legacies to be clean and pure and respectful of the community as well as your role, because you're establishing the legacy for Santa Maria, you're making, you're making a legacy for future city council members, and you're also creating a city, hopefully, that you will be very proud of when, when you live it, after you leave the city council. So I hope you choose J. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebecca Bordenz, followed by Hazel Davalos, followed by Judith Birch.
Good evening. My name is Becca Borden, and I live in Santa Maria in the blue district in each of these maps, it would seem. I am very concerned with this business of the drawing the districts, because I think Santa Maria has a lot to offer the world, and I'm scared it might be taken advantage of, and that simply can't happen. I was shocked to see H1 even made the final three, and Map N1 is also just as awkwardly drawn out. These two also have something interesting in common. They are both drawn around neighborhoods that, so that you are not in the same districts. And even though that wasn't one of the original criteria, I remember from the last meeting, and it also, you kept citing continuity of government as if it was like a thing, and so I went to the internet looking for this thing that was continuity of government as like a rule, and all I could find was the plan for what happens in case we go to nuclear war, and I just don't think this is as dramatic as nuclear war. This would make sense, drawing it around your districts, if you were the only people in Santa Maria able to hold public office, but I'm sure a participatory democratic process that is just would prove you wrong. I want you to believe in Santa Maria and put its needs before your own wants as elected community servants. Choose Map J1, because it not only serves us, but also shows that we can trust our leaders to have integrity. Choose J1 because it's good for the future. You aren't doing anything for the future of democracy in Santa Maria by tracing around one another's houses. The choice must be clear to you at this point. The incumbent is just one part of this process, and there is no other clear choice besides J1. Thank you.
Thank you. Hazel Davalos, followed by Judith Birch, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Sarah Galindo.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Madam Mayor. My name is Hazel Davalos. I work with a community organization called CAUZ. According to the California Elections Code 21620, which lays out the California Voting Rights Act, the council may give consideration to the four following factors: topography, geography, cohesiveness, contiguous, integrity, and compactness of territory and community of interest of the districts. You've heard that definition several times throughout this process. What you'll note is that these four criteria do not mention continuity of governance, and that's for good reason, because carving out safe, safe seats in future elections for city council, city council members should never take priority over the representation of our neighborhoods. Continuity of governance is not included anywhere in the legal statutes that govern this process. To prioritize it over criteria that is actually included in the law, such as maintaining the integrity of our neighborhoods and following communities of interest, is a grave mistake. Adopting a map that doesn't carve seats out for sitting council members does not do anything to change the will of the voters. Every single council member here who was elected by the voters to a four-year term will still get a four-year term, no matter what map we pick. This is not about protecting the votes of the past, it's about securing the votes of the future. No council member gets to be guaranteed a future seat just because they had one in the past. The law doesn't protect your city council seat, but it does protect our neighborhoods. I ask you to please vote for the greater good and the best interests of Santa Maria residents and support Map J. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Birch, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Sarah Galindo. Judith Birch, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Sarah Galindo.
Hi, Council. Um, I would like to just repeat what the last speaker said about continuity of government. Um, I think we should be looking at all the other factors rather than protecting your seats. I'm sorry to have to say that, but, um, the reason this whole thing came about is the fact that the last election, uh, probably didn't consider, um, the Latino voters as well, they weren't as well represented by people running for government. And, um, so, yes, I'm not in favor of the continuity of governance as well. And I vote for MAP J-1. Um, we need to let the voters decide who's in the council, and the council shouldn't be the ones who get to decide who their voters are. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Sarah Galindo, followed by Janet Cruz.
Thank you. I am speaking in support of MAP J-1 tonight, but first I want to comment on the other two maps. MAP H1 is an obvious, blatant gerrymandering to create a safe district for Councilwoman Waterfield by its creation of the Waterfield Worm. Councilman Moats recognized the gerrymandering in his comments about MAP H1 at the previous public hearing. MAP H1 is drawn so crazily that it lumps densely packed, low-income immigrant families who live mainly in apartments on the west side with mostly white, middle-class homeowners in Hancock Park on the east side, which just happens to be where Councilwoman Waterfield resides. MAP H1 very clearly puts yourselves and your politics over what's best for Latinos and the other residents of Santa Maria. Now, MAP N1. That raises serious voting rights concerns through its obvious gerrymandered, gerrymandered boundaries and its splitting of communities of interest. The gerrymandering in MAP N1 is not as visually obvious as it is in MAP H1, but the foot sticking out of District 2 was clearly created solely to scoop up Councilman Cordero into his own safe district. As the councilman stressed at the previous public hearing, not everyone will get what they want, which is the exact opposite of what the council members are doing for themselves. Continuity of government is nothing more than a phrase to protect, to protect your own political interests and power. As now constituted, your council does not adequately represent the Latino population in the city. MAP J-1 is the only district map among the three maps chosen by your council that is fair, logical, and best represents the Latino population in Santa Maria. It starts at the center of the city, Main Street and Broadway, which was favored by Councilman Boyson and Mayor Patino, and by virtually everyone who has spoken at the previous public hearings. In MAP J-1, the northwest district represents mostly Latino, single-family homeowners, while the southwest district represents mostly Latino renters and apartments. MAP J-1 most accurately reflects the true neighborhoods in the city. Your council has a unique opportunity to, to do what is best for all the residents in Santa Maria, not just yourselves. I urge all of you to do the right thing and adopt MAP J-1 as the new district map for Santa Maria. History will clearly show which path you chose.
Sarah Galindo, followed by Janet Cruz, followed by Joanna Barrera.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. I would like to start off by saying MAP H1 is a blatant gerrymander. It obviously carves out council people's seats, and there's no more discussion, it's just a ridiculous gerrymander. It's visually obvious. MAP N1, on the other hand, is a more subtle gerrymander. It's obvious, when you look at it, it sticks together drastically different neighborhoods, such as the Fair Park and Manami Park, with the higher-income neighborhoods near the country club. And then you have it separating communities such as the country club and the southeast side of the city, as well as splitting up the northeast neighborhoods surrounding the freeway and hospital. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't have a continuity of communities of interest, which is a huge thing for our city. MAP J-1, on the other hand, reflects virtually everything the people in the previous council meetings have voiced, and those who participated in drawing maps, they all had a similar idea of Maiden Broadway and Four Quadrants. To not choose MAP J would show that all of this community involvement, all of these meetings, were just an illusion of us having power over our, the way our city is drawn. And it was an illusion of you guys listening to us if you choose anything other than MAP J. The decision you make tonight will lay the foundation for how Santa Maria will be represented for generations to come. Please do the right thing and put long-term needs of our city over short-term city council seats. It only lasts four years. Your seats only last four years, but this map will last for generations. Please, do the right thing for our city and vote for MAP J.
Janet Cruz, followed by Joanna Barrera, followed by Abraham Melendez, followed by Dan Mog is the last name.
Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. Last council meeting, I came in thinking that I, it wasn't necessary to use my three minutes of public comment to talk about gerrymandering and to talk about the California Rights Act. I was wrong. Councilmember Moats did ask about the, uh, to the demographer, the question of what is gerrymandering? And unfortunately, the, the demographer wasn't able to answer the question, so here I am today to answer this question real quick. So I have two sources. I use the internet, I use my textbook from my class, Political Science, that I'm currently taking at Allegheny College. And, you know, from the book, it says to draw electoral districts' boundaries so as to favor one party. From the internet, "A practice intended to establish a political advantage for a particular party or group by manipulating district boundaries." All maps here are gerrymandered. I believe MAP J-1 has a fairer and more, better representation for the community of Santa Maria, or the city of Santa Maria. I was disappointed last meeting because I heard councilmembers trying to protect their seats, being afraid to run against each other. Just recently, I was running, running my campaign for my college's student council. I ran against three outstanding student, or candidates. And, you know, something the students voted, they made their voice be heard. I won the election, and just how some of you are concerned about running against each other, I was too. However, I had confidence in myself and that, and believed strongly that the students would vote correctly and that they knew what I stood for. I, I say the same to you. Please have, you know, confidence for, for the audience, for the communities. They voted for you, and we hope that you vote correctly and support us, support the community, support the city in voting MAP J-1. Thank you.
Joanna Barrera, followed by Abraham Melendez, followed by Danny Mog.
Good afternoon, city councilmembers, and, um, I just want to echo exactly what, you know, the rest of individuals have been saying. Uh, it's obvious that MAP H1 is just blatantly gerrymandering. It's an awkward, like, uh, what we like to call, like, just not correctly drawn. Uh, obviously, the downtown is not equally shared on that map, N1 as well. It's just, uh, it's just not going to give equal opportunity to other, especially to the Latino communities to be able to, to vote and, um, well, you know, give other communities the opportunity to grow their, their political power. You know, that's a thing to, to consider, and like Connie mentioned before, um, think about the future, think about like 30 years ahead of yourselves. This is your city, and you would want to see it in good hands, right? And to just grow the youth as well. The youth are a very part, an important part of the community. And I believe that, uh, we haven't given them the opportunity to show themselves, the millennial generation as well, to show themselves that they have, uh, the opportunity to run for office in the future. So, uh, think about the future, think about the youth. I support MAP J-1. Uh, it's, it's exactly just, uh, has a piece of the downtown, um, and it's in the best interest of the Chamber of Commerce as well, uh, so take that into consideration. And, um, I actually live in this neighborhood, the northwest. Um, my parents are here to see how you all decide, so, uh, just be aware that your community is watching out and, uh, making sure that you make the right decisions. So please support MAP J-1. Thank you.
Abraham Melendez, followed by Danny Mog, followed by David Dennis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city councilmembers. My name is Abraham Melendez, and I work with a lot of young adults here in Santa Maria, young professionals and youth. And I can tell you, um, myself, that for a lot of the youth that you're seeing today here today, there is probably a dozen that are paying attention to this process at the moment. And I like to think that maybe I'm representing a little bit of their voice, but I'm also here on behalf of myself. So first of all, I'd like to make a quick note regarding the decision to change the map names. I think it was interesting how the maps went from last names to letters, to numbers, to letters with numbers, and now just letters again. But moving on to the actual maps, a lot of the discussion that we've been having, like I said, with the young adults. Um, H, I believe MAP H, um, does not really, uh, stand, uh, the test. I think it is completely unobsettable, and I even think that you guys realize that that is not, uh, a map we're considering. I think it would be shameful for everyone involved. MAP N1, um, I also think is, like everybody has stated, it does a lot of the gerrymandering. And I also think it's interesting that that is the one that the demographer decided to draw, uh, that, that continued to pass, uh, by the demographer. One of the reasons we think that it's not a good map is because, as Dr. Moats mentioned, um, there are a lot of communities that are being split. You have communities in District 3 that are by, right here, this community, in the fairgrounds and by the Santa Maria High, that are being placed with the wealthiest communities by, you know, the golf course and, and everything, uh, over there. The other issue is that you're splitting up, uh, the communities on the south, you're splitting up the east and the west, and I also think that is very much unfair for them. And lastly, in District 2 and District 4, you're splitting up the communities, again, around the, the freeway, around the hospital. I just don't think that makes sense. I really think, um, and again, a lot of people think, have, they've stated, that MAP J-1 really does make the more, the most sense. I know you guys threw out a lot of maps out there because it didn't meet some of the criteria that you were, uh, that, you know, were the continuity of government. Um, but I really think that this is a good middle ground. It starts with the Maiden Broadway, and then, of course, it has to adjust for population because that is a lot. Lastly, I think it is important, and especially now that we have, where, you know, we announced the Youth Week, to think about the youth that are going to be voting, that maybe didn't get in the chest to vote last year, but they're going to be voting in 2018 or in 2020. I know that Santa Maria voters are and will be watching, and even though you think you're doing yourself a favor by voting on a map that gives you your own districts, my question for you to consider is this: is the risk of alienating voters for participating in gerrymandering worth losing votes on what I'm, on what I'm sure is going to be a very challenging race?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Melendez.
Or is it better to look at the interests of Santa Maria as a whole and realize that these go beyond anyone's political career? Thank you.
Danny Mog, followed by David Dennis, followed by Gail McNeely.
Evening. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and distinguished guests. We meet here today to discuss the final three proposed district maps, which will determine the boundaries up for four voting districts, which comprise the city of Santa Maria. I'd like to start my statement by commending, uh, all of those who have worked to make this transition process as transparent and fair as possible. At the same time, I would like to also issue a word of caution. It has occurred to me that throughout this process, there have been a couple of themes that I've heard repeatedly. The first is this, uh, notion of continuity of government. This is nothing more than a code word for manipulation of district lines that would possibly benefit one or more council members as we look forward to the next city council election. A good example of what might be described as continuity of government would be the proposed district map as of the la, that is, we, is known as the last couple of days that we're referring to as H1. This map has an obvious provision to separate council members from one another to avoid possible runoff election. The technical term for, uh, uh, drawing a, a voting map in such a manner is called gerrymandering. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, a sitting council member of this body has described this particular map as such. I urge city council members, I, no, I insist that city council members reject this proposed map outright on the grounds that it is drawn with the interest, interest of council members in mind and not putting the interests of the voters of the city of Santa Maria first. To be clear, city council members will come and go. However, district boundaries, which we are choosing, will be something that the voters of the city of Santa Maria will have to live with for the foreseeable future. Should one or more council members advocate for MAP H1, it will be clear to voters that they are putting their own self-interest firsts, and I dare say that there will be a, a political cost associated with such a decision. If we are truly honest with ourselves, a sitting council member, uh, who is a true public servant, has nothing to fear from a runoff election. The next theme that I would like to address is a repeated comment that I've heard from city council, uh, from the very first meeting on this decision, this, this notion that you are not going to get everything that you want. I've tried to unpack this, uh, statement a few times, and if you break it down, it's really only one thing that I, we, and I'm fairly confident, speaking for a lot of the voters here tonight, want from this process. That is a fair voting map that provides a voice for each and every community and culture in our city. A map that provides each and every voter of the city of Santa Maria with a council member that will advocate for their particular neighborhood and be sensitive to the challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Mog. David Dennis.
I, I urge you to vote for.
Followed by Gail McNeely.
J-1. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, it's certainly been obvious that, uh, through this meeting and, uh, the previous ones, there's been a clear consensus of support from the public and even from the business community at the previous meeting via the Chamber of Commerce for a map that uses the downtown intersection of Maiden Broadway as a primary division. MAP J does that. It also best satisfies the criteria as laid out at the beginning of these hearings by the demographer. It clearly has a very strong community of interest that supports the primary divisions of the city. Those help to make it understandable to voters as to the district they live in and to the people that they will get to vote for. That should improve turnout and improve input into our community, which I think we all believe in the long run will be better for Santa Maria. So simpler maps will help us. That MAP J is compact, it's contiguous, it has visible and historic boundaries. It's a tough situation, I think, for you, uh, that all of you strive to serve the community well and do a great deal of that. And I think, believe, you would be good at these jobs again. Every council member is going to be able to serve their full term that they were elected for, and none of these maps will avoid head-to-head pairings of some type. MAP J has a sense of fairness in it because it puts all four council members in pairs that would be similar situations. So in some sense, while it does add an additional set of pairings, there is some fairness between all of you in what you're having to deal with. MAP N was explained in the previous meeting by the demographer as an exercise to show how a map could be drawn that included the city center that was dramatically different from the other maps submitted by the public, because what we saw from the public over and over and over again was a map that was separated at Maiden and Broadway. The demographer presented that map as an alternative to show that there are other ways to do it. One thing I'm very unhappy about with that map is it splits my neighborhood right in half within blocks of homes all of the same type, residents of all of the same type, and we're split in half. MAP H is very, a very uncompact attempt to draw a map that would create separate districts for current council members. MAP J is the best map for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Gail McNeely, followed by Andy Watson.
It's good to see you again. I want to thank you as individuals for the hard work you do for the city. It's not always thanked, it's not always appreciated, but we know that you work very hard for us, and this is probably the hardest job you have to do, is to divide our city into districts that are fair and equal. You might have read the opinion piece that I wrote in the Santa Maria Times, and it does talk about the Macias map as being the one fair, equal map that we can use in the city. It doesn't divide communities of interest, it keeps them together. And that's what we're trying to do, is empower the people to want to vote, to want to register to vote, to choose someone from their community to be their leader on the council. And I think that the Macias map is the map. The others do not accomplish that. They divide our city. And the Macias map, I believe, is also called J1. J1 is that map. The other maps, if you look at them, do divide communities of interest, and the state law says that you can neither put all of an interest group into one district, nor can you divide them in such a way that you're diluting their power as voters. Both the other maps do that in one way or another. So I ask you, please, consider that you are representing 100,000 people in choosing a map that will lead into the future. And even though it may hurt you as an individual, we know how much you want to be a council person, and we want you to do what's right for the people, and it may be your leadership that will really matter in the years ahead. One other note I'd like to make is, I, as an individual citizen, do not want to see any more people appointed to the city council. I don't believe that that is a good way to run a city. You should always let the people vote, and if there is an open city council position, now you have just that many people in that council district to vote. So you don't want to have, you can have a special election because it's not as expensive as a citywide election. I hope you will not have any appointments of city council people in the future unless, of course, someone dies. And if someone dies, have an election. Always let the people choose the person. Don't let the people on the council choose someone to work with them. I know that's convenient, but we want the people's voices to be heard in every election in every case. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Watson will be our last speaker.
I'm here to echo a lot of the comments tonight. I'm here to support MAP J1. I think it makes most sense to the average citizen here in Santa Maria and reflects a lot of the options that were submitted by citizen groups. I know, and I, well, a lot has been said about N1 and I'm against gerrymandering, and I just wanted to echo what's been said, is that, you know, this is a decision that, you know, could last for generations and it's very important. So thank you for, I hope that you will support J1. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion and direction.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield.
Okay. Mr. Trujillo, and this is towards Mr. Trujillo, you had mentioned the letter that Maldef had written in, and there was, I read that letter too, that was given out to all the council members. Can you comment on some of the issues that they are making reference to in their letter of May 1, 2017?
Yes, of course. Maldef opposes MAP H1 on the grounds that District 3 disregards communities of interest. There really isn't a bright line legal rule for this. There is, I believe, the Latino citizen voting age population in District 3 is 55%. The Latino turnout is about 44% to 45%. Again, I don't believe, I believe it's legally defensible. In regards to their second objection, or really what they're doing is they're urging the council to select the 2018 seats, or the majority Latino seats for 2018 rather than the 2020. And they cite to the Elections Code, Section 10010B, that "in determining the final election sequence, the governing body shall give special consideration to the purposes of the California Voting Rights Act." We have looked at that issue, we've looked at the legislative history. According to the author of AB 350, the bill was to avoid the situation that occurred in the city of Anaheim. And the legislative history indicates that the city of Anaheim approved two ballot measures, one creating a one Latino-majority district and scheduled the election during a midterm election, which traditionally has a lower voter turnout. This, again, is a quote from the legislative history. "The decision created an outrage amongst the Latino community and forced Anaheim to schedule the only Latino-majority district for a presidential election to avoid facing another lawsuit." Again, quoting, "Under existing law, nothing would stop another city from following Anaheim's example in scheduling its staggered city council districts in a manner that would dilute and suppress the vote of a protected class in violation of the California Voting Rights Act," end quote. Maldef's letter, I was trying to reconcile the two, and I just can't. I believe that Maldef's letter is actually in opposition to what the legislative history It's actually contrary, in my opinion. I haven't had a chance to speak to Maldef about these issues, and this issue, again, is addressed in Mr. Johnson's memo, in Attachment D, where he discusses, "There really is no correct answer to this conflict about which district, a majority district, if it's to go with the presidential election where there's a better voter turnout or not." And he discusses that at Page 2, and I would defer to him for further analysis of that conflict issue.
Okay. Okay, and did you want to say something? Did you finish?
I do have another, I do have another question, and this is for the demographer.
I'm sorry, I do have another question, and it's for the demographer, Mr. Johnson. And I know that in the, from the beginning to the very last city council meeting we had on the 20th, there was a large concern about renters and the protections of renters and their voice and the whole thing. So in your statistical analysis of each of the three draft districts maps, you touch upon the housing stats of those that rent versus those that are homeowners. In my review of the housing data, I would say that MAP H and MAP J have a disproportionate amount of renters packed into just one district, and that would be District 3 at 70% to 76%. And MAP N more evenly distributes those renters throughout the city in each of the districts. Is that correct or not?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Mr. Boyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, we've heard several comments about that we should not consider this continuity of government, and yet, every meeting that we've had, we talked, we've talked about part of the, and I was under the impression, was part of the Voters' Rights Act, that we should avoid, or that one of the things that we could consider was the avoidance of head-to-head confrontations as much as possible. Now, does that, where does, where does that come from?
Councilman, it actually comes from the United States Supreme Court. There's a U.S. Supreme Court ruling saying that you can consider avoiding head-to-head contests. And one note I made is, if you were commenting, there was someone searching for where this appears. The most prominent place where this is discussed is in the glossary of a publication called Redistricting in Your Community, and it's published jointly by the Asian Pacific Legal Center, the NAACP, and the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund. So even they cite it as a consideration that is normally taken into, normally considered during this process.
Dr. Moats.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the demographer a question. When we finally decide on the map, possibly, hopefully, tonight, isn't it true that that map will only exist for the elections of 2018 and 2020? So this map is not a legacy for the future beyond that? In fact, we'll have a census in 2020, and this whole thing will have to be redrawn again for the 2022 election, right?
That's correct. The 2020 census data is released in early 2021, so that's when all the redrawing takes place. So each district, whatever map you choose, each district will hold one election, and then we'll revisit this before any district holds its second election.
Any questions? Mr. Cordero?
Yes, most of them have been asked already. With the three existing maps, this is for Mr. Hayden or the demographer, has anyone gone through the statistical data in these three maps to see which of the maps meets the legal definition, the legal requirements of making this transition? Is there a map that serves more criteria that is legally put upon the districting or a map that is way out of bounds, that doesn't comply with anything type of that?
No, I think all three of these maps, we've actually all worked on this along with outside council, and all three maps saw the, some of the maps that didn't, you eliminated last round.
Okay. And point of clarification, though, MAP J does fall outside the council criteria. If you recall, in the meeting of April the 20th, there was a list of criteria, and council member, excuse me, City Attorney Trujillo mentioned equal population, which they all three do. They comply with the Federal Voters' Rights Act, which they all three do. They have the downtown specific plan in all three of the maps. There is the community of interest and the demarcation at Main and Broadway in all three maps. However, the head-to-head competition, trying to avoid it, is in H and N, it is not in J. In MAP J, you do have pairings of two sets of council members in District 2 and District 4. So to answer your question, of those three, MAP J would not be in compliance with what council dictated as the listed criteria. Okay, thank you.
If I may add one point to that, too. There was one mentioned about the foot in MAP N during the public comment, and I do want to clarify that, while it's not a council-adopted criteria, you've heard repeatedly from the county registrar to try to minimize splitting precincts. And that border between 4 and 2 over in the east, that's following the precinct lines. So it is a little bit of a jagged line, but that's because the county registrar drew a jagged precinct. So I did want to clarify that that's not gerrymandering for any one incumbent's advantage. That's following the additional criteria that the county asked us to consider.
Okay, so the criteria that we agreed on then, last time, then you're saying that only MAP J does not meet the criteria that we set up? So you're saying, Mr. Hayden? Okay, thank you.
A question for the demographer again. There's been an allegation that people on the council now are doing these things to protect one another. When you drew these maps, did you contact any of, you didn't contact me, but did you contact any of the other council people to get their input on this, to see which map we would prefer?
No, we take direction from the council in the form of the adoption of the criteria. So we were looking at your criteria. We also have an advantage in that we're drawing these lines after the public has drawn their maps. So we do get to look at all their maps, take into consideration there what they've looked at, and try to adapt maps together.
I see. I guess what I'm trying to get at, sir, is that, I can only speak for myself, but you've got no input from me as to, I want to do this or do that to protect any single item being considered here tonight.
That's great. No, we did not take good direction for any members of council.
Dr. Moats.
Yes.
Yeah, City Attorney's properly clarified. Outside of the direction we got from the council in the public meetings, especially in the.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hayden, because I didn't understand, why MAP J is out of compliance with head-to-head conflicts? Because all, all three of those maps have head-to-head conflicts, you know, between me and Mr. Boyson. So all of them would be out of. It's just that MAP J has two episodes.
If you take a look at Slide Number 5 that Mr. Johnson put up, and you take a look at the fifth column over, fourth column over, fifth, where it says pairings, you'll see the NDC map, which is MAP N, pairs council, and we cannot avoid pairing council members Boyson and Moats. And so you'll see that happening in all three maps. However, in MAP J, you will see there's two sets of pairings of council members, and one of the criterias that council members made at the last hearing was they were trying to avoid, if at all possible, head-to-head pairings of council members.
So you're saying that between me and Mr. Boyson, it's unavoidable, but in MAP J, it is avoidable?
Correct.
And that's why it's out of compliance?
That was in answer to one of the council members that asked that question.
I understand. Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield.
Staying on the same subject, Mr. Trujillo, could you read through the five or six criterias that the city council agreed upon at the last meeting?
The council gave direction to the demographer that the following criteria should be considered. There were five criteria. One, each district contain equal population. Two, each district comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. That each district contain a portion of the downtown specific plan. That communities of interest and the historic division of the city at Main and Broadway be considered. And that head-to-head contests between incumbent council members be avoided to the extent possible.
Okay, with that, it just makes it more clear, if we're attempting to avoid head-to-head competition as being one of the criterias, we would want to adhere in order to promote the continuity of government. I didn't make it up, it came from the Supreme Court, and as Councilmember Cordero suggested, not all of the people will be happy. There's going to be a lot of unhappy people up here, too, but that's just apparently the way it goes. And in taking into consideration, in regards to the renters in the city, I don't see how we can consider MAP J only because of the concentration of renters. If you look on the housing seats, the concentration of renters is 70% in MAP J. So instead of spreading the renters out throughout MAP N, where they get an equal amount of renters, that would seem more appropriate map, in my opinion.
Did you want, did you want to make a motion, Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I.
I'd like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I can't see you, and forgive me, you'll have to yell. Mr. Cordero.
I would like to, I had a young man come to see me and talk about these maps recently, and I liked MAP Number H because it gave me the district that I've lived in for more than 40 years. I don't see anything wrong with wanting to keep that district. I don't see anything wrong with suggesting that, since I've lived there for 40 years, to be able to vote amongst the people where I live. Having said that, I also think that where I etta, I'd be jumping and screaming and hollering to get rid of this map because of everything that you find people have said here tonight, and maybe more for her. So with that map, I just don't, I don't have any heartaches about dropping that map, and I think it would be the kindest thing we could do out of the three for Ms. Waterfield. And if it bothers you that. And if it bothers you that we concern ourselves and speak with each other, we're colleagues, and I, I would hope that it wouldn't bother you. With regard to Map J, I don't care to have the head-to-head with etta. Uh, if it has to be, it has to be. If we end up with Map J, that'll mean that I'll be running again in 2018. Uh, and I, I just think it's, in my thinking, it's wasted energy. Map N on the other case, and by the way, Map, Map J gives me everything and more of what my district would be. Um, and I'm willing to piece that out to, because I believe it's the right thing to do. And Map N seems to meet most of the criteria, or more criteria than the other maps. And I was looking at the renters situation, too. The renters in Map J in, uh, District Three are 76%, and in District One, they're 38%. That, that's not even remotely close. That's, that's, you folks mentioned respect for the renters, uh, that sure doesn't give it. And if I go over to Map N, they're 47, 45, 46, and 64%, much closer than the other map. And the population is also closer. 25, 261, 24, 18, 24, 484, and 24, 990. Also very close, considering that, that, uh, this was all done on somebody's big computer. Uh, and I, I, I'm trying desperately to understand the love for Map J, uh, but as Mr. Moats pointed out, these maps are only good until 2022, or 2021. They're going to be redrawn again. That's not, they're not going to stay for 30 years. I mean, the number of 30 years was mentioned, how much better we'll feel, I mean, in 30 years, we don't know. We don't know what it's going to look like. It's impossible for anybody to know. Uh, I, I'm sure some things will be basically the same, but, uh, we have no idea what the population explosion is going to be, and, and what areas it's going to be in. So I, I wouldn't have any heartache about getting rid of, uh, Map H1, and I would imagine Ms. Waterfield wouldn't either. And I am currently favoring N1 because it meets so much more of the criteria than J does. It, it, it does meet the four, the intersection of Main and Broadway, however, there is less touching from, uh, excuse me, less on it from, uh, from, uh, District Two. But everybody gets some of it. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cordero. Uh, Dr. Moats?
So is now the time for us to make our comments and arguments for or against things?
You may.
Couple of things. First of all, I don't see what renters have to do with anything. I, I think a high number of renters in an area is a concentration of interest and probably would be of benefit for one plan over the other. Second, in terms of, uh, head-to-head confrontations, there don't have to be any head-to-head confrontations. Um, the elections, uh, for, um, Councilman Waterfield's 2018, and Mr. Cordero doesn't finish his till 2020. So Mr. Cordero doesn't have to go up against Mrs. Waterfield, that would be a choice that he would take. Um, I, like most people, don't like, uh, Map H very much. So it's pretty obvious that there are a lot of flaws in it, so I'm just going to discard that right offhand. On Map N, there's a lot of things wrong with Map N. First of all, it's not compact, and you have District Four stretching from Orchid, which you can't even see to the south because it extends so far south, all the way up to the levee. Map N splits the southern part of town in two, and it splits the northeast part of town in two. I think there's a strong community of interest in the San, City of Santa Maria, south of Beteravia, that would be lost. In Area Three, there's no community of interest there at all. You have, uh, Country Club and Mark Smith's Country Club Estates mixed in with Sheila Lane and Nula. What community of interest is there there? We talk about having national, natural geographic boundaries, Highway 101 being one. Uh, in Map N, uh, it splits east of the, uh, 101 into two districts, so it violates the national, natural geographic boundary. Some people mention the levees, the natural geographic boundary, and Map N actually divvies it up amongst three districts instead of two. One thing that I think is interesting is Map N creates three districts where Hispanics of voting-age population live, instead of the other two maps, which have two. So I think in terms of divvying up the population of citizens who vote, that are Hispanic, Map N does a poor job. Not only that, Map N concentrates white people into Area Four with the highest predominance of white people of any of the maps. So I don't like Map N. I strongly am in favor of Map J. Map J generally follows Main and Broadway. It respects the four quadrants that this city was laid out on. It creates a District Three with a high number of Hispanic citizens of voting-age population with the likelihood of electing a Hispanic candidate they want. Map J maintains communities of interest in the northwest, the northeast, and the south. Okay, now the poison pill. Map J does not appear to have been drawn with concern for head-to-head incumbent contests, and therefore has no specific special interests. However, there is no need to have head-to-head contacts, contest with this map. And I wanted to read you a little something about what my thoughts were on continuity of government. It's an optional criteria for the voting districts to create boundaries that it should attempt to avoid head-to-head contests between incumbent council persons. However, it doesn't say that we can't have council persons residing in the same district during the period of transition to district elections. Two prior iterations of district maps attempted to place all four incumbents in one district, and we eliminated those because that absolutely would put two council members head-to-head in 2018. If this council wished to maintain continuity of government, it could for the next four years until the election of 2020 without any head-to-head contests. And I think that certainly qualifies as continuity of government. If council persons elect to run prematurely against other council members and force head-to-head contests, then the continuity of this council will be jeopardized, and the situation will be solely self-inflicted. I would recommend that council persons not up for reelection in 2018, finish out their terms as council persons at large, and then leave the council, as I will do myself. At that point, such an ex-councilman could run for mayor in 2020, or run again as a councilman in 2022. I'm completely in support of this, uh, Map J.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. The beauty of Map N is that it takes into consideration all of the criteria, all of the criteria that council deemed appropriate, and no offense to you, Michael. It takes in the equal population, the downtown specific plan in each district, Main and Broadway are the starting of the quadrants, no pairing of council members, renters are even distributed, and it meets with mall deaf and causes requests to have one Latino-majority district up for election in 2018, and that would be District Three. So my, my choice of map would be Map N.
You're looking at me? Oh, no.
I don't know if you want to talk.
I can't see you from over here, but did you want to say something?
You know, I, with all deference to Dr. Moats, I, I certainly appreciate your comments, Dr. Moats, but I, I sincerely do believe that the avoidance of head-to-head confrontation, especially as we make this transition to district elections, is of utmost importance. Um, you know, we've never operated as, as districts in the City of Santa Maria, we've always operated at large. I've got to be real honest with you, you know, when this first thing came up and we were, uh, received the threat of a lawsuit in our closed session, my, my first thought was, you know, what have we done wrong? I, you know, I, I, I kind of felt like Santa Maria's always been run pretty good, we're a, a very financially, um, uh, conservative city, we've, we've always saved for the rainy day, we've, um, you know, tried to provide, uh, the, the, uh, public and the citizens of the City of Santa Maria with the best services that we possibly could. And so, you know, I, I really didn't see what, what the big deal was, um, but I, I understand it, we're not going to get involved in a lawsuit, we're, we're going to go through this districting thing, but as, as we go in this districting thing, I, I think it's just important that we make sure that whichever map we choose, we, um, uh, try to avoid those head-to-head conflicts as much as possible. As Dr. Moats said, with us living in the same precinct, that's not going to be possible. Um, as a matter of fact, we, we live on the same street. So obviously, that's not going to be possible, uh, but it is certainly possible to, uh, come up with a, uh, defensible map and, and a, what I consider to be a fair map, that would, um, not pit Councilmember Waterfield and Councilmember Cordero, um, in the same district. Um, I, I agree with, uh, Dr. Moats that, uh, Map H just doesn't make any sense that, um, that it, it almost looks like something that the County of Santa Barbara would have drawn up to protect their districts. Um, but, um, I, you know, and, and as, you know, I, I love Mike Cordero's comment that, uh, and nobody's going to be happy with, with everything on the map, but for me, Map N meets more of those, uh, criteria than, uh, any of the other maps, so I would be in favor of Map N as well.
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion?
Ms. Waterfield?
I'd like to make a motion for District Map N with Districts Three and Four up for election in 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that Map N be selected with Districts Three and Four open for election on 2018?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty eighteen.
Districts Three and Four up for election in 2018.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
No.
Councilmember Cordero?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Yes. Motion carries. So we are, okay, so the next item is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will hold a public hearing pursuant to California Elections Code Section 10010 to introduce an ordinance amending the Santa Maria Municipal Code, Chapter 2-25, establishing a bi-district election process.
Staff report is being made by City Attorney, Mr. Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this agenda item is for the council to introduce an ordinance establishing a bi-district election process for the map it previously selected and establishing the sequence of elections. Staff prepared, uh, three versions of the ordinance, uh, for your consideration, and of course, the other, um, H and J should not be considered, those are off the table now. So you are introducing, um, ordinance, um, that introduces Map N1. The, um, government code that allows the council to adopt an election, a district election system by ordinance, um, was actually adopted and became effective, I mean, it was amended and became effective on January 1st, 2017 of this year. The proposed ordinance, um, in front of you, amends Chapter 2-25 of the municipal code by adding new sections, 225.03, which establishes a bi-district electoral system, new section 2-25.04, which establishes the four district map boundaries contained in Map N1, and section 2-25.05, which designates the sequence of elections as Three and Four as previously indicated, directed by the council. So staff recommends that the council open a public hearing, invite members of the public to speak on the proposed ordinance establishing district elections and adopting Map N1 as reflected in Exhibit A, close a public hearing and entertain a motion to introduce for first reading, ordinance number 201706, and continue for, to the meeting of May 16th for second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspond, written correspondence?
None, none in what we were discussing earlier.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No requests to speak on this item.
Then I'll close the public hearing and bring this back, item back to the council for discussion or a motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Ms. Waterfield?
I'd like to make, uh, a motion to adopt Map Number, Map N1, ordinance number 201706, to be introduced for the first reading and continued to the next meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the San Maria Municipal Code, Chapter 225, establishing a bi-district election process with districts lines specified in Exhibit Map N1.
I second that, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2017-8-6 for Map N1, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
No.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next item will be a report by our city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Our next city council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, May the 16th. The, there will be a change of venue, we will not be holding that meeting at the Maldonado Youth Center, we will be holding that in the council chambers. Uh, it will be starting at 6:30 as usual. We have a number of consent agenda items. One of them is a public convenience and necessity, uh, and finding for alcohol sales at Target. The other one is a summary vacation of a portion of the roadway, easement on La Brea, annexations and assessments of parcels into the landscape maintenance districts. You will have the second reading of tonight's ordinance, uh, before the city council for your consideration. And then also, we'll have two regular business items. The naming of a park, Westgate Ranch Park, in the name of Bob O'Rourke, and then also a third quarter budget report. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. The next item are all reports from council members. Mr. Boyson?
Sure, I'll get started. Madam Mayor, uh, by way of, uh, AB 1234 reporting, I did represent the, um, city and city council at the, uh, Central Coast Water Authority, uh, last week, and, um, actually have a little good news. Uh, first of all, our state, uh, water allocation has been increased to 85%. Uh, that's the highest it's been in a lot of years. Uh, the other, um, uh, the, um, the rainfall total in California has now exceeded the wet, it is now the wettest year in history, it exceeded, uh, 1982 and 1983. So, um, we, uh, do anticipate that, um, uh, we will, uh, continue to have, uh, a good, strong allocation. Today, at the Board of Supervisors... Today at the Board of Supervisors, they did approve Central Coast Water Authority to be the lead agent, agency for the preparation of the SEQA document for the requested purchase of the 12,000 acre feet of suspended Table A, which was good news. However, Supervisor Williams, and quite honestly, I replayed the tape five times and still have not quite figured out what he was trying to say. But in some respects, he is trying to make sure that the Board of Supervisors continues to have a bite of the apple as far as the use of this water, and obviously wanting to make sure that it is going to be used in, within the County of Santa Barbara, but does not want it to be used for increased development within the County of Santa Barbara. So if you understand that, you, you've done one better than me. But that's the only required reporting I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Nothing about our sister city?
I, I haven't been able to make a trip to see if I can get a sister city relationship with Lahaina, but I, I will certainly put that on the, on my schedule.
You hadn't reported on it lately, so I just want...
And I would like though to thank everyone that, that did come out for Serve Santa Maria last Saturday. A great turnout between 500 and 600 people. A lot of, a lot of great stuff got done, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I presented a proclamation at the Elks Queen Kickoff Dinner. I also attended Comcast Care Day at Adams School with words of encouragement for the children, the parents, and the teachers. I did a promo for Ben Hayes, which is, is the Santa Maria Police Council. And that event is going to be on Monday, June the 12th. Everybody mark your calendars. And it's going to be a great time with golfing and entertainment dinner. And our last winner last year, and he's coming back to defend his title, is...
It was a horse of some sort headed by...
To defend their title, is Councilmember Boyson. And I attended a ladies' com dinner. Ladies get out. It was a, in support of com. And also for the Lions Club on Saturday, I was a speaker at their, at their district level of high school speakers. And there were four excellent speakers from Ventura. One was from Santa Maria. The other two were from Santa Barbara. And they were just incredible. So if I was ever encouraged by our youth, it would have been that particular day because they were very smart, remarkable young ladies. And that's it.
Dr. Moats?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I attended the Elks Queen Kickoff with Councilperson Waterfield on the 21st. I attended a fundraiser called Brews and Cues at Pioneer Park following Saturday to raise money for the Santa Maria Noontime Kiwanis Elks Queen candidate. I attended the Boys and Girls Club Annual Auction at the Radisson on April 28th. Went to the Colab Dinner. I don't know if that's really anything to brag about. But I had a good time, and that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On the 24th of this month, I had a very distinguished opportunity to participate in the first meeting for the Mayor's Task Force Against Youth Violence. I've been to many of these kinds of things. This was as well-done as any that I've seen. And I think it already has some traction in the community that we can make a difference. We may not change everything, but I believe that there's enough people and stakeholders in that room that we will have an impact. On the 26th, I attended the SCORE Small Business Meeting out at the Radisson, which was interesting. I, I didn't really know what to expect. And I ended up going into a session where they talked about workers. And I was, walked out of there with my position at the Elks a little bit like, I got to go back and get back there and make sure I'm doing this stuff right. Because it was, it was very interesting and very impacting if you're doing it wrong. On the 27th, I was fortunate to attend something called Tiny Houses. It's still out, yet to see what's going to happen. It's being run by a, a very active lady in the community. Her name is Eva Macias. She works with CET, and she's a teacher at Hancock. And the first effort she has is to provide these small houses for homeless veterans. I, I don't know how you can pick a better group to do that with. But she still has some things to do. The, it was pointed out by Mr. Eng that she has some hurdles to get over with regard to some of the city ordinances she'll have to comply with. And she's a long ways from getting there, but she's making some progress.
My, excuse me, did they have an example of a tiny house there?
No, they didn't have one there, but there were some pictures.
Well, I saw a tiny house being brought through Santa Maria, so I thought that would be... They're excellent.
There is, there's something like that. I think the one you're talking about is built by CET. And they build two of them a year. And CET builds them to teach young people in the community the art of, the carpentry, how to build a house. And they have to put windows in and doors and raise the foundation and so on and so forth. And then at the end of the year, they tear them down. And they rebuild them again next year so that they have new students come in. So that might be one of those that you saw.
That was excellent. It was beautiful.
But it's, it's got, it's a good idea. And I hope that she's able to make it happen. There are some things we have to watch out for. And then on the 28th, along with Dr. Moats, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Auction at the Radisson. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. April 19th, I attended the Annual Victims Rights Award Luncheon honoring some of our Santa Maria PD detectives. And our district attorney, Joyce Studley, was there to honor them. April 20th, I attended my monthly SB KAG board meeting. And in the morning, an APCD meeting in the afternoon. On the, see, I was gone that one weekend. So on the April, Monday, April 24th, the Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety, I think we had probably 30, 35 people there in attendance and at the table. And we're missing maybe about three people that couldn't come, so that was really good. And so we'd like to invite the public, any of the public that would like to come, because we want, we aren't required to have the Brown Act for these meetings, but we would like the public to come and see what's going on with our youth safety task force. On April 26th, I attended the first annual CADA Town Hall meeting, which was held at the Boys and Girls Club, along with Mr. Cordero and his wife, Linda. April 26th, I attended the SCORE Santa Maria Small Business Summit at the Radisson. I spoke at the Women's Luncheon at Merrill Gardens. And that evening, I was the closing speaker at the Santa Maria Valley Student Industry Collaboration Event. On the 27th, I had the privilege to speak to first graders, Boy Scouts, at their monthly, at a monthly meeting. And I said, that's the first time I think I've been in a picture with a bunch of Boy Scouts. And, and I'm taller than all of them. And they all, they all had good questions they had written down to ask me. And boy, their meetings started right on time and they ended right on time. April 28th, I attended my Mac Santa Maria Board Meeting in the morning. And then I worked the CWA, I belong to California Women for Agriculture, and I worked the strawberry variety tasting booth in the afternoon. I then attended United Ag Health Wellness Clinic ribbon cutting and grant opening. And that was at the whole strawberry festival, which was a nice windy day. On April 29th, I went out to the Elks Event Center and with Serve Santa Maria. And we did, we had put 600 people there at Serve... Some of the people went out early to their locations. And so I went out to the Elks Event Center along with Bob O'Rourke. And Judy Monte was there with us. And we had a lot of people. 28 people we took out there. And some of those people even knew what they were doing. They put us pulling weeds, so you know, where we were on the ladder. Then I went, I had to go home and shower so I could do an apple pie eating contest, which I thought was really going to be fun. 16 apple pies. And I don't know why I signed up for a luncheon afterwards because I didn't feel like eating for the rest of the day. But New Hope Missionary Baptist Church did their annual scholarship awards luncheon. And then this weekend, I went down to Los Angeles to Carson for the Gang Conference LA, and I got back at 4 o'clock this afternoon. And I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of a friend of ours, all of ours. He has served the city for so many years. And he was a school teacher. He was a vice principal. He was a principal at El Camino. And I was privileged to work for him when he taught at El Camino. And, and he was on the Parks Commission. He was on the Hancock Board. And in so many ways, served our community and such a fine man. But Henry Granin passed yesterday. And I would just like to adjourn the meeting in his honor. He was such a great person. We will miss him. We'll miss him. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Meeting is adjourned.